I remember every year this council.
I know they've had issues with it, but I mean, I think this transcends some.
Hey, guys.
Hey, Brian. How are you?
Good. How you doing, Bob? Hey, I got a question for you. Did you guys get a copy of the annual and multi-year goals in your package?
I did.
You did? Okay, good, good. All right, because the package I'm looking at, that I received, they're not in there. And I was just looking through it. I'm like, oh, it's gonna be hard for them to review if they don't have a copy of it.
Yeah.
All right, good.
Yeah, we got it.
Excellent.
Hey, Brock. Hey, Brock, can you hear me? It's Mike.
Hey, Mike, how you doing?
Good. Happy New Year, bro.
Happy New Year.
So I think it was a pretty, pretty busy night for, for both first responders and police the other night, huh?
Yeah, yeah, from what I heard.
We.
I guess that's probably not an ideal shift to have.
Enough, enough. I'm sure we won't be on that shift.
It's like a reasonably short agenda tonight. Not too bad.
Excellent. I'd like to call the order, the December, I mean, excuse me, the January 4th, 2021, Town Council meeting to order with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to sit as a licensing board?
So moved, Scott. Bill Hirst so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moffett, aye?
Scott, Bill Hirst, aye.
Gary, aye.
Davis, aye.
I'd like to open a hearing on a renewal of the following campground licenses. Frontier Camper Park LLC, Dorothy Watson, 180A Maxon Hill Road, Ashaway, Rhode Island, licensed for 225 campsites and safari sites. Is the applicant present or is there a representative present? If so, please raise your hand. Dial nine to raise your hand. Hold on. Dorothy Watson. Okay. I'm just gonna go through here. Lisa, do you know, are all fees paid and notices posted?
Sorry, speaking.
Filing fees have been paid, yes. This is Lisa. Filing fees were paid and notice was posted as well as a butter notice to all people around the campgrounds for all of them.
Okay. Lisa, should I limit discussion to the end of this or should we discuss this after, after each applicant here?
I'm present, sorry.
Very good.
Okay, next up Greenwood Hill Campground Association Incorporated, Jeffrey P. Aldrich, 13 Newberry Lane, Hope Valley, Rhode Island, licensed for 80 campsites and safari sites. Is the applicant or representative present? If so, please raise your hand. Star nine to raise your hand, please. Okay, thank you. I see the hand raised. Is this Jeffrey? Jeffrey, is that your hand raised? 1047, last four digits of the phone number. Is this Jeffrey Aldrich or his representative? Star six to unmute yourself.
I believe that's the last four digits of his number.
Okay, thank you. So I'll assume that he is, or I will say that he is president. Next up, Holly Tree Campground Incorporated, Marie Patrissi, 109 Ashaway Road, Ashaway, Rhode Island, licensed for 158 campsites and safari sites. Is the applicant or representative for the applicant present? If so, please raise your hand.
Jennifer Johnson is present for the applicant.
Thank you. Lisa, are all fees and notices posted?
Yeah.
Thank you. And also for Jeffrey Aldrich on Greenwood Hill Road, are all fees and notices posted?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next up Whispering Pines Campground, Cameron May, WP Management Group LLC, 41 Saw Mill Road, Hope Valley, Rhode Island, licensed for 213 campsites and safari sites. Is the applicant or the representative for the applicant present? Cameron May, are you present? Star six to unmute yourself.
Present.
Thank you.
Cameron May.
Thank you very much. Next up, Ashaway Pines RV Resort LLC, 225 Ashaway Road, licensed for 260 campsites. There are no safari sites. Is the applicant or the representative present? If so, please raise your hand. I see here Brianna Johnston, is this you?
Yes, present.
Excellent, thank you. Lisa, are all fees and notices paid?
With Ashaway Pines RV Resort, yes. But going back to Whispering Pines, I am awaiting their application and their filing fee, and that has been mailed out.
Okay, so this here left for me is just their application that hasn't been filled out.
Right. A photocopy was left of it, so that's in the works. I'm sure we'll get it.
Okay.
So there's nothing to really prevent anything from being acknowledged or renewed.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I'd like to open up a discussion on this. Do we have any, any discussion from any councilors?
Yes. Scott, Bill Hirst. I know Andrea Pansera contacted me this afternoon. Read an email from her and I suggested that she send one to the whole council, which some of you might not get. The Ashaway Pines one, which is the one now filed from Pete's Grocery, she expressed some concerns and I didn't, would think we should at least have a discussion whether that should be delayed until we get some answers about maybe their water use. I know it was a dry summer and, but there was a problem. I know Andrea had concerns about watering cattle and things of that nature. And it might not be a town problem per se, but it would seem that maybe we should at least have some input from the DEM on that issue before we proceeded granting that. I'm just curious how the other council members feel about it. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comment before I comment? Bob, Sharon, no?
No.
I, I, I think we should move forward with this application. I think this is something for further investigation, but not necessarily something that at this moment in time should, should prevent this, from this applicant from being heard. You know, with that, I did receive an email from, from Ms. Pansera that will be entered into the record. It has been read and, and it will be responded to. And I appreciate her reaching out to us as a council. Thank you.
I, I, I think that it's, we could hold off a meeting. These licenses don't really take an effect until I believe March when they open or April. So I don't think it's crucial as proved tonight, that application. And I would ask that these, this, this application be separated. If we're gonna do the vote on it as a group, I ask that this one be done separately. Thank you.
Steve, this is Bob. I have a question.
Counsel, Marv, go ahead.
Has there been any official concerns or issues raised on this? Or is it just, you know, kind of word of mouth that somebody's has a concern?
I received an email today from Andrea Pansera. You, you all maybe have received it on our town council email. I, I reviewed it. I only received the email about an hour before the meeting, so I, you know, in the, in hurrying up to get ready to come here tonight, I read it once, so I'm not, you know, there's, there's some things in it that, you know, could be concerning. You know, about some, some vandalism and trespassing and stuff. I, I do have Andrea here, has, has her, her hand raised. Is this, I mean, I would think this would be an appropriate time for her to, to speak.
Yeah.
Andrea, you have the floor.
I have unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for giving me the floor. And I appreciate that you had a chance to at least glance at the last email. These are issues that we have raised several times before town boards over the past several years. Concerns about trespass and concerns about water use at the campground and whether the campground is actually pumping and storing water as had been directed by the town planning and zoning boards when the campground was first approved. And that was under the previous ownership. And this is not something that current owners were involved with in any way. I have spoken to Brianna about the trespass issue that we had, that we knew was attributed to kids at the campground. And she said she would get on it right away in terms of trying to talk to the families involved. I'm not sure if you were able to do that, Brianna, because the names had been deleted by the police in their report because they were juveniles. But we did talk about her putting up some sort of signage and making it clearer to campers that they needed to stay within the bounds of the campground. And I also believe that there is something already there about children, especially must, that parents must know where they are at all times, which might be difficult in the middle of the summer, in the middle of the woods, but that is also something I believe the campground is already doing. Still, I want to make sure that on their end, you know, we are somewhat protected from further trespass, you know, as we go forward. And then as far as the water issue is concerned, it's much more involved. And if you're not familiar with it, it's a lot of discussion at previous meetings of all kinds, documentation. And the primary goal that I have here tonight is to confirm that the water system was actually put in as required and that is currently being operated as required in order to have a minimal impact on abutters, particularly us on our farm property, where we depend on water in order to function. We must feed our animals. We must have water to do other things around the farm. And we also have a farmhouse where people live, including my 89-year-old mom. And she had to vacate this summer because we did not have water. And yes, we did end up going into an official drought, but that also points to another concern of ours is that over the past three fairly dry summers, our well has lower pressure during the same time that the campground is in high season. And also, we've experienced it on holiday weekends. So we think, but we do not know that there may be some connection. And we would really like to know if there's something that can and should be done in order to help us protect our water supply. I'm hoping the council can step in on this. The last couple of times we've raised it, it's been passed on to the town planner, the town solicitor. I've been told to make phone calls to the different people at the DEM. I've gone round and round on this. And I, at this point, I think that the town, especially in its function as a licensing board, needs to step up and make sure that the regulations that it put in place are actually being followed.
Okay, this is Scott. And this is the deal. I'm sitting as a member of the licensing board and number one, regardless of what we do tonight, whether we grant this, I want this referred to the town manager for report back to the town council within the next couple of meetings. The town council runs this town to the town manager, and this issue needs to come to a head. And the town manager is the top gun on, of the staff. And the town council works through him as the town charter suggests, and we need an answer. And if we have to write a letter to the DEM, fine, whatever we have to do.
Okay.
And so, the other thing is, and my question to Andrea is, and we graduated from Charahoe the same year, many, many 50 years this year. I hope she forgives me.
No, 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 it's not 50.
Well, 1971 is, 2021 is 50 years.
Oh, no, I, no, no, I'm sorry, Scott.
But anyway, forgive me for saying that. But anyways, we're dating ourselves. But the thing is, if you was on, do you think that we should approve this license with, is this license should be approved or should we delay it? What's your, what is your feeling on this?
As I said in my letter, I don't have any issues with the current management. They've been, the managers there have been responsive when I have talked to them in person. And I know they're trying to run a business. I know they were affected by COVID issues and as so many people were having to delay their opening last year, but they also extended their season, which meant that if they were doing, draining our water supply, that went on longer than it might have otherwise. So how do I feel about it? I would like to say that I would suggest that you vote in, in favor of the license, but pending issuance, any discovery by the council on the questions that I've raised. So as as you've said, the license doesn't take effect actually until March, correct? And they don't, I don't, Brianna, I don't know when you're planning to open this year, but it's usually not before April. So I think you have time.
But, you know, first off, in due diligence, I would feel that Brianna Johnston should be able to, to respond to.
Surely.
So Brianna, if, if you have anything to say, could you please raise your hand? If not.
I've unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, my volume's not too loud. I can't hear you too well. In response to the trespassing issue, I'd like to address that first. We did put up several no trespassing signs at the back of our property that abuts Ms. Pansera's lot. And also, we've installed a trail camera to monitor the family, well, the children, I suppose, that are back there trespassing. I've also not allowed the family to come back whose children were trespassing at that time. As far as the water issue, I'd be happy to, I mean, I guess contact, we use, you know, these water solutions. I can contact them and see if there's any way to run like a pressure test or something to that effect to figure out if in fact we are affecting her water supply.
I'd like to send it that. Brianna, thank you for putting up the trespassing signs and following through on that. We've also done a couple of things on our side in terms of surveillance cameras and lighting. So, and we plan to do more. But I appreciate what you've done on that. And I think a pressure test may be one of the things that we must do in order to find out what impact it has. But I do also believe that we need to double check, and I don't know if you know, and we can talk about this perhaps outside this meeting, so we don't go on and on, is what is actually being done in terms of when pumping is occurring and how much water is being stored and whether the timing in storage may also be, need to be adjusted so that it has less of an impact on our operation.
Excellent.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Andrea, and, and thank you, Brianna. I absolutely appreciate your comments. With that being said, we're gonna move forward with the voting on, on all this. But I would like to ask Brian Rosso to look into any type of stipulations that are set as, as far as this campground goes, if they are required to follow certain steps in, in the use of groundwater. I would much appreciate that.
Sure, no problem.
And I, I would say, Scott, again, I will vote for this thing, but we do need to have a resolution of this water issue and somebody certainly better qualified than we are that knows hydrology and, and things of that nature's access to water. I know this past year's been, was dry, but over a period of years, to encourage the agricultural legacy of this town, you farms have to have water, so it's just the way it is. And I, I'll, if you wanna vote on them collectively, that's fine, or you ever wanna do it, but.
Hold on, Ms. Pansera has her hand up again. Andrea, did you wanna say something?
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have lowered it, but I do echo what Scott said about the importance of farms and the legacy of agricultural land in Hopkinton in particular. And as I mentioned in my letter, we some years ago sold development rights to about 200 acres of our property in order to make sure that that land was preserved for agricultural use when we could have done something else that had much more of an adverse impact on the town itself. So we are vested in protecting that land for the future. And that is really my big concern here, that we are, we are its current stewards and we want to do a very good job being those stewards. That's it.
I just, Scott, again, I just wanna see this, this issue resolved. I will vote for the thing, but I, I look forward to the town manager getting back to the council on a resolution, whether it has to be DEM or whatever situation, so we don't, so we resolve this issue because people deserve an answer. And I think that it was a concern from Andrea in his, in her email that she didn't think she got an answer. I believe it was from the former solicitor, but whatever. Hopefully, we try to give people answers. They might not like the answer, but we, we step up to the plate and at least try to come up with an answer for these issues affecting the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And with that said, I mean, the, you know, the town, as far as responsibility, you know, we can look into it as far as a, you know, if, if there's any stipulations that were involved in the approval of this campground. I mean, that's, that's where we're gonna enter this at. You know, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna be the determiny of, you know, the water situation. And everything will, will allow that to play out, but we wanna make sure that they are following, you know, what was stipulated in their agreement when they built. Thank you.
Steve?
Yes, Sharon, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to weigh in. I think if, if this has been ongoing and she's gone around, Andrea's gone around to DEM, et cetera, I don't know how it's gonna be different this time. But I agree. The water situation needs to be resolved. And I agree that it might not be the town's responsibility as far as the DEM thing goes. Maybe it has to be DEM. But, but I think having, having Ryan, Ryan look in, figure out where the, the town's responsibility ends and, and the other people begin, the residents begin. I think we do need to have that defined.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, with, is, is there any more discussion? If there's no further discussion, do I have a motion to grant renewal to each license subject to all state and town regulations being met in all town taxes current prior to issue?
I'll make that a motion, Mr. President. Scott, Bill Hirst.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Marv, aye.
Moffett, aye?
Scott, Bill Hirst, aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn as a licensing board and reconvene as a council?
Scott, Bill Hirst, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Moffett, aye?
Scott, Bill Hirst, aye.
Davis, aye.
Up next, consent agenda. Approve town council meeting minutes of December 21st, 2020. Town council workshop notes of December 14th, 2020. Set February 16th, 2021 as the second town council meeting in February due to President's Day holiday. Set July 6th, 2021 as the first town council meeting in July due to the Independence Day holiday. Set September 7th, 2021 as the first town council meeting in September due to Labor Day holiday. Ratify and approve the 12th local declaration of emergency from January 4th, 2021 to February 8th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Scott, Bill Hirst, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Davis, so moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Scott, Bill Hirst, aye.
Moffett, aye?
Davis, aye.
Motion to approve consent agenda passed. Next up is the proposed Charahoe Budget Workshop schedule. I have received from the school superintendent Gina Picard, a schedule here. I'm going to list off the first five meetings here, and then I'm also gonna pass out some information in regards to signing up for the meeting and finding the, the agenda in the right location. The first, first budget workshop is 6:00 PM Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. The next budget workshop is Thursday, January 7th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Following is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021, and that is a regular school committee meeting. That's just in between the rest of them. The next up here is Wednesday, January 13th, 2021. That's the omnibus meeting on the budget, and that is at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, January 19th, 2021, Budget Workshop at 6:00 PM. Thursday, January 21st, 2021, Budget Workshop, 6:00 PM. So those are the next five town council, I mean, excuse me, the next five school committing, meetings regarding the budget. If you go to the Charahoe Regional School District website, you will see a tab for school committee. Charahoe Regional School District website, you will see a tab for school committee. And that will take you to the meeting agendas, and it would allow you to sign up for the meeting. Pre-registration is required, and all that is, is just entering your name and email, and then it will allow you to to open up a link in order to attend. And I encourage all residents to please attend. Obviously, the Charahoe School Budget is a very important issue in the town of Hopkinton. Go ahead Scott.
Yeah, Scott Billhurst, I'm going to tell the school committee right here and now that one of the issues that I've been talking about for quite a few years is an outside management study. And I would hope that they will seriously consider including that in the budget. And I also am quite disappointed that the Charahoe School Committee at the omnibus meeting where the only subject is the school budget is very short sighted, because the General Assembly meets from January to basically June, and you deal with education-related issues, and that is the time to discuss any agendas, legislative agendas that we have as a region could be discussed and advocated, and it's a missed opportunity, and I think somebody should say that. Once again, I will say that I hope that they seriously look at an outside management study. The Charahoe School District gets tens of millions of dollars from the taxpayers of Charleston, Richmond, and Hopkinton. And not only is it, is it an imbalance how it impacts the taxpayers in the three individual towns, but also impacts the actual operation of town governments in the three towns differently. And the ability of a town like Hopkins to do certain things is impacted by the amount of money the Charahoe School District gets, so it not only impacts individual families and taxpayers, but actually impacts individual towns differently in the town of Hopkinton a lot, so I just want to have, say that publicly, thank you.
Okay, thank you Scott. Up next, new business. Discuss, consider, and possibly vote to adopt the proposed townwide fiscal year 21-22 annual goals and fiscal year 2023 through 25 multi-year goals. I'm going to let Brian Rosso describe that just a little bit here.
Sure, good evening council, this is Brian Rosso, acting town manager, finance director. I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of a background on this document. This document is just basically to assist the council members with the budgetary process and make them aware of the future initiatives of the town. This is in no way a binding document, it's just for informational purposes only. And I trust that you guys have all had a chance to look it over. So we'll open it up to discussion in a little bit, but I just wanted to give you a little more background. Again, it's for information purposes only, the town's done this for years. It's kind of a launching point for the department heads and the town manager and the finance director to really sit down. We had a meeting on December 21 via Zoom, we all got together, kind of a meeting of the minds, everybody talks and discusses what's going on in their departments, any needs or wants that, any operational tasks that they're facing, that they might need help with through the budgetary process or the town management. So it's, again, it's just to help make the council aware of some of the things we're trying to get done in the current year. We also put together a multi-year list. I think for discussion purposes, at least in my opinion, the annual goal is more important. The multi-year goal is kind of a fluid document that gets changed every year. But for budgeting purposes, the annual goal is something that we would talk about come budget workshop time. This document, again, it's not binding, there's nothing about the approval of this document that's going to say, okay, we automatically have to go and put these items in our budget. There's still a lengthy process ahead with the budget process. The next step would be the department head meetings where historically, the town manager, the finance director, and the individual department heads would set up meetings. They're currently scheduled for the week, actually next week, so January 11 through 15. I'll meet with all the individual department heads, we'll discuss any items that are on this list. And once I get a chance to look over the budget, you know, the current tax roll, the school budget, we kind of put all those pieces together, and then we discuss whether or not, you know, these things are feasible, if they're monetary based, we'll see if it's even possible. At that point in time, we would put it in the budget if we thought it was something that needed to be brought to the council's attention. And then during the budget workshops, that's when the council would put these individual items over and approve them to be funded. So, you know, just to make it clear, this isn't something that, you know, we're looking for approval on in order to get funding. I don't, I don't want you to jump to that conclusion, this is just, again, informational purposes only, and just kind of bring you guys up to speed on what's going on in the operations of the town. So with that being said, did you guys have a chance to look it over, did you have questions on any items? Or did you want me to go through, it's kind of a lengthy list, I didn't know if you wanted me to go through each item, or if you kind of want to just feel, want me to fill some questions on it?
I'm Scott Billhurst.
Yes, Scott Billhurst, number 16, I just jumped out at me because it was a five-time, five-plus increase. And number 16, it says increased zoning certificate fees from $5 to $25, building and zoning. And the logical question would be, I think for anyone, is why was it increased five times? Yeah. And what is a zoning certificate fee compared to like communities like Richmond, Charleston, Situate, towns like that? And I don't have the answer to that, so I'm just curious why it increased by such an amount.
Well, councilman, I think you hit the nail on the head. This number wasn't pulled out of thin air, actually, the deputy zoning clerk and also the building and zoning director, they actually did some research and went around and looked at other towns of the municipalities around. And the $25 fee is very reasonable, certainly not on the high end, but this is something that, you know, in my history, I've heard brought up on several occasions that it needed to be increased. And I think it's kind of just, the can's been getting kicked down the road, and it's long overdue. I think we should have probably been increasing this incrementally over the years, and and I couldn't tell you off the top of my head when it was last increased, but I know it's been quite a while. So, and I don't think the $25 is absorbing it. I think it's right on par with all the other towns similar to Hopkinton in size in the area.
It's just that the increase was so many times five times the amount that you just would normally ask anybody if they saw that, what's going on?
Sure. Does anyone else have any comments or questions or concerns on this?
Yeah, hey Brian, it's Mike, on the multi-page goals on number, hold on, number 11, it talks about vehicles, equipment replacement, plow trucks, trucks, plow trucks, front-end lower brush cutter, sweeper, DPW. I'm sure you know there's programs out there, whether it be GSA resale, state resale, and stuff like that. I've done some of these things to get stuff, so if you want, we can talk offline, and Sue can come up with.
Sure, that'd be great. And just to touch on that briefly, you know, that's, that's kind of a long-term picture there, you know, we've been the last few fiscal years, we've actually been consciously trying to up the fleet at Public Works, because things were getting pretty, pretty bad over there, a lot of beat-down plow trucks and whatnot, so we've actually replaced, I believe, three in the last four years. So we're slowly, we usually kind of peck away at them, you know, when we can, you know, we'll try to, if we can fit one in the budget, we'll find out what's most urgent, but, you know, to think, you know, I just want you to be aware that that's not like one request, you know. It's not like-
No, no.
You know.
Trust me, I get where you're coming from, and just, you know, the average person doesn't realize what a what a new sand or a plow truck or a blade plow cost, I mean, that's the thing that shocks people, but yeah, I mean, I'll get together with you, try to get together with this week, we'll discuss some stuff. Looking to help you with that one.
Steve Moffett here, I just want to say thank you for providing this. It's nice to have a, you know, kind of a list to kind of see where where everyone's thinking as far as, you know, goal-wise, and also kind of thinking, you know, about things that would improve the town and and maybe help their jobs a little bit easier, and, you know. So I will keep this in my folder, and I will always be, you know, kind of, you know, looking at it here, here and there for definitely for opportunities to implement any of these, or to help, you know, make sure some of this gets taken care of. Thank you.
Steve?
Yes Sharon, go ahead.
Okay, I have two things on the multi-year one, where it says conduct a study to determine costs, this is number nine, of fluorescent lights, changing from fluorescents to LED, I'm suggesting that you contact National Grid, they may have some programs that help nonprofits to do this. You know, so that it doesn't cost a lot. And then the other question I have is, what do you, in general, Brian, what do you consider a warrant item? That the people have to vote on, how does something become a warrant item?
Well, you know, honestly, Lisa could probably give you a better definition than I could. But these would not be considered warrant items, these would be items that would be placed on the capital improvement. And when I say that, you know, not all of these are monetary, and some of them would be able to be, you know, like a new filing cabinet, that's something that we could fit within the current operating budget. So not all of these are going to be big-ticket items that would make the capital improvement plan. But any of these items that weren't covered by grant funds or operating budget, they would be placed on the capital improvement plan, and that would, you know, as you know Sharon, that's something that we go through. We touch upon every budget workshop, depending on whatever departments we're looking at during that workshop. So these items-
It was just for the new people, I wanted you to define what is a warrant item and why, and how it has to be voted on as part of the election.
Sure, sure. Lisa, did you want to touch on that, you might have a clearer definition?
Sure, this is Lisa. The best way to define that is as we go through the budget process, there are sometimes line items identified, this is just one example, where if we had a mild winter, for instance, this past, if we have a mild winter this winter, and the salt and sand line item isn't spent to the extent that it was budgeted for, in the same as the overtime in the Public Works Department budget, the, what they try to do towards the end of the process is to make that a goal of perhaps setting that aside in a restricted account, and that is something that needs a vote of the people, so that would be put on the that would be considered a warrant item, and it would be placed after approval onto the the ballot for the budget referendum in June, sorry, it took me a little while to get that out. And there are other times where I think there might have been examples of restricting some legal services numbers, or if there was, when we were studying all the dangerous trees to set aside money for that, or there has been in the past, also in the public works realm, they've placed money aside to do some additional roads, to have them surface and that type of thing, so it can it's usually infrastructure, and it's usually planning for future years and in the best way possible on how to best use money that's already been budgeted.
Right, and thanks Lisa, and my the only thing I would add to that is, from my knowledge, is what generally happens is, everything that's spent by the town has to go through the budget process. So if there is something that happened in the current year budget, say this current year, and we decided at year end that we underspent, say, overtime for Public Works by $5,000, and we wanted to use those funds, they've already been budgeted as overtime dollars for Public Works. If we wanted to change what they were currently budgeted for and reallocate them to another source, instead of circumventing that budget process, it has to go through voter approval and go as a warrant item, so that it can can get approved, because those dollars were approved by voters and the council as, say, Public Works overtime. So in order to change the use of that, those funds, it would have to get, again, it'd have to be approved by the voters.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Steve, I got a couple of things for Brian I wanted to ask.
Sure, go ahead Bob.
So it's not about the current list, I was just wondering if there were a couple of items that we could request to be noted as potential items to be added to the list. The first one is, I would like a review and maybe some changes to our town website to make it a little bit easier for people to find things. And I've talked to Chris Shibe about this before, and he was interested in doing this as well. And the second one, I would like to maybe get a task on the list, it may be a multi-year list or multi-year task, but I'd like to collect all of our current ordinances and all of our regulation documents and make sure that they are all available on the website, or somehow, so that we can, so that everybody can access the most current you know, bylaws, regulations, and ordinances, and all of that stuff. Because there's some gaps right now, so.
Sure, sure, and we certainly can make those things happen, and they will certainly find their way on the capital improvement, or however they need to be funded, we'll we'll have time for that during the budget workshops, generally how this works is, this is an operational document for town use, so it hasn't gone really, it gets passed over to the council on February 8. And at that point in time, it's your budget, you know, this is something that the town manager has worked with the finance director and the department heads to put together, he puts a proposed budget together, hands that over to the council, and the council, from that point on, it's your budget, you guys do as you wish with it, so you know, we're there to consult and answer any questions and make any changes, but at that point in time, that's when you guys can add, delete, take, you know, any revisions you want to do. So we'll definitely have time to do that. I'm making notes now to make sure that when we go discuss during the IT workshop, that we'll get those items on there.
Yep. Great, thank you.
Thank you, is there any other discussion? Go ahead Scott.
Scott Billhurst, you know, there are five people who elected to the town council. And basically, and I'm not criticizing any of the goals, but these are the goals established by the bureaucracy of the town and not the elected leadership of the town, which is the five members of the town council, so I think we all have different agendas and are different perspectives as members of council, but we might want to think what our collective vision is as a council, not that we're all on the same page, we're all individuals and we're all elected, we want an election to be here, that we have some of our own goals that we want to achieve in this year, the next two years to benefit this town, and we might agree on- And we might agree on some, disagree on others, but maybe we should consider coming forward with our own goals as a council, collective goals, uh, where we want to go. Uh, we're the ones that are accountable to the public, uh, through election. Not the bureaucracy, and I'm not saying that their goals are necessarily bad, but could be, one of the things that I've thought about in the past is maintaining town property. And, uh, uh, and things of that nature. That's just one example. Or, uh, or possibly roads and stuff like that. So I think it would be nice if the five of us on a council come up with, uh, our own goals for which, which we hope to achieve or at least make some improvement in the next two years. We're the elected officials. We're the ones that have to go to the voters of Hopkins and say, this is what we accomplished or what we tried to do. Uh, you know, it's just saying in a way that, uh, we're accountable to the public and we're the ones who, uh, are, uh, the dog, if you will, and we're not going to be whale, uh, you know, have the, the tail wagging the dog, so to speak. And with all due respect to the town employees, because they're very important in the day-to-day operation of this town. But this council won an election and we should come up with some of our own goals as elected leaders of this town, where we want to go in the next two years. Just something to think about. Thank you.
I understand that, Scott. Um, and I just want to make the comment that, um, you know, this, this list here is, in my opinion, an exercise to identify things by the people who work for this town, who take care of this town day in and day out. Um, and I am grateful for it. I mean, sure, if you want to use the word bureaucracy, when it's, you know, no way near the level of, I would say, the US government. I, um, I, I mean, I can understand that train of thought, but here, um, you know, obviously we can have goals as, as a town council. And, you know, sure, we should have these goals, but we should also know the goals of the people who day, day in and day out, take care of this town. They've, they represent us also. By being here, they're, they're the faces when people walk through the door here. They're the people who see out there plowing the roads, trimming the trees and, and doing all the things that, you know, that we're happy that they're doing. So I, I, I just wanted to add that to the conversation. And Bob, I see that you have a comment?
Yes, Steve. So, so just to, to step in, again, I, I didn't, it wasn't my intention to confuse the issue. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that I think we should do as a town. But those items were not legislative type items. They were more operational. So that's why I brought them up at this point as a kind of an FYI heads up that, you know, uh, I, I wouldn't want to, you know, like work with Chris Shibe on a, a website redesign without that being something that was discussed and already, you know, noted as a budget item or not a budget item, but a, a, you know, a to-do list item. Um, I, I agree with you, Scott, that we should come up with, um, legislative type, um, items that we want to accomplish. Um, how, however we do that, if we submit, you know, our ideas to, to Steve, um, I think that's a great idea. I just wanted to point out a couple of operational type tasks that I think should be done. That's all.
Thank you, Bob.
Sure.
Sharon, did you have a comment? Go ahead, Sharon.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Bob Marvel and actually when I did my canvassing and talked to residents, um, like for example, a crosswalk, walk between on, um, across, um, um, at Spring Street and, uh, and the, and the fire station, yeah, the fire station. Um, people want a crosswalk and I guess what had, we got so hung up, I got so hung, hung up in the solar stuff. I never got down to the little things that people told me that they wanted. So yeah, I think we ought to do that. We ought to, we are, and, and I assume, Brian, um, should we talk about that at budgeting or should we talk to you and then have you tell, you know, forward our, our, our suggestions to the various departments? I'm not sure how these things are going to get done, but I, their operation.
Uh, what I would suggest, and I, I think the way this, according to our charter, you know, to, to follow the charter, when these type of items come up, um, the town manager, um, whoever that is at the time, should, it should be brought to his attention or her attention. Um, so that they, so that they can follow through with the operations and say, okay, if I need to get planning involved, if I need to get, you know, cause there's things, what, what we have to do, and it's probably, uh, you know, I don't want to get sidetracked, but this is something that probably should have been mentioned, um, previous to this, that, you know, as far as directing, um, department heads, it, it really should always go through the town manager. Um, so that the town manager isn't left in the dark, um, and, and he's not being circumvented and, and he'll be in the know. Uh, and, and for everybody's benefit, there could be things that I'm aware of, such as grants. Um, or, you know, I, I'll get the right people involved for you to get what you need done, done. Um, and I think that way everybody's, um, in the loop too, and, and no one's, you know, being blindsided. You know, like, like you said, if there's a project going on that the town manager's not aware of, it's not going to make it on, on any sort of radar. So it's always good to kind of, um, use, use that office, the town manager's office, myself, um, as a conduit to, to get things done on the operational level. Um, so I'm, I'm always open to, you know, uh, by phone or email, if you guys ever want to discuss any of this stuff. And I'll, I'll make sure that myself and the department heads follow through on whatever you guys need.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Council Gary.
Hey, uh, hey, Brian, Sharon, good subject there. There was a, I'm pretty sure you're going to find that, you know, of course Route 3 is a state road. Not sure Spring Street falls into a state road too, but I don't know if you can remember a couple of years back, there was a problem with, at the end of 216, where it connects to 3. There was a number of accidents where people would just go straight through it and everybody forgot how to use, you know, didn't see the stop sign. Same way at the end of down of 216 past Pete's and of course where best way is now. I think, I can't remember, I'm not sure who it was. I know it was the last town, council or the one before that reached out to the DOT liaison and actually had the words road stop put in it and stuff like that. So that might be an avenue we could probably try to go to, bride is just an idea. And then instead of us picking up the bill, the state can take care of it. But I appreciate you'd have to go to the DOT liaison. I'm not sure who that is for us.
Right, so I'm, I'm just going to add to that too. So that's a great point, Mike, you know, that sometimes we have to, you know, it's not just on the town. It's,
Oh, I mean, I'd like to.
There's a whole.
Spray paint stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, I hear you there. So, so anyway, so I would encourage, you know, again, to touch on what Scott said. If, if any of the counselors, you know, just like the, uh, the town, the town department heads put their little list together, it, it would probably be in your own interest and the town's interest to, and even for the citizens' interest to, who recommend these things to, to create your own list, you know? I mean, obviously we're, we're, we're the council. I mean, we can, uh, we, we can bring these issues forward and, and discuss them at, at any time. So Sharon, were you saying something?
I just said, okay.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So, um, all right, it looks like Council Gary may have gone to the bathroom. So I was going to, um, ask for a motion here, so.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we adopt the, uh, uh, just wait that he gets back so we can vote on it, but I'll make the motion. Scott Billhurst makes a motion to adopt the townwide fiscal year 2021, 22 annual goals and fiscal year 2023, 25 multiple, multiple year goals. And I make that a motion, Mr. President.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Yeah, Marvel is second.
Okay, just wait for Council Gary to get back so he can vote.
Council Gary, we, uh, we have a motion to, to approve and we have a second. So I'm going to ask all, all in favor.
Marvel, aye.
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Moffett, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gary, aye.
Thank you. Next up on new business, uh, consider budget timetable slash, uh, schedule work, uh, budget workshop. So again, um, uh, Brian or Lisa, whoever, um, is, uh, holding the calendar to, uh, to mark these days down, uh, you have the floor.
Okay, I, uh, I think the best way to approach this is to say the dates we're not available or we prefer not to use. And I only have three. It's the third Wednesday, uh, the first Wednesday and the fourth Thursday, uh, uh, of the month. So other than those three days, uh,
So what days are those? What, do you know that?
Whatever the fourth Thursday is of a month, uh, the first Wednesday and, uh, the third Wednesday.
So we won't be meeting in January, right, Brian? Is, was this?
No.
No.
Yeah, you're correct. Um, so just.
So let's, listen, I'm going to let Brian talk about it for a minute and then we can, uh, then we can move forward with this.
Yeah, or, or Lisa, you know, I don't, I don't want to, you know, talk too much here, but, um, we do have a, a timetable that Lisa puts together. Lisa, did, did you want to chime in on this?
Okay, I will. This is Lisa. Uh, so you're not going to be receiving the budget, the proposed budget until, um, the Monday, the 8th of February. So it'd be sometime that week that you would want to begin your discussions or your meetings. Um, because of COVID, we, I imagine we'll still be having our things, our meetings conducted, um, remotely. So you have a little bit more freedom with regard to which nights that you have them. You don't have to stick strictly to a Monday. Uh, you could have them on a night that where normally, um, another, uh, board or commission might be meeting as well. So, um, you have from, you have until about the 60th of March to conduct your workshops. Um, and then it has to be other, other avenues. As, as you can see, I provided you with a budget timetable. And, um, there are certain requirements in the charter and it's based on the charter how this is drawn up. And it has to be published certain times ahead of financial town assembly, which is the second Wednesday in May. I think this is, uh, this year it is May 4th. So we have, we have to take those, uh, dates and timeframes into account when we deal with, um, the budget referendum, et cetera. So it's all backed up and plugged in based on that. So whenever you want to start, if you want to start having them, there have been times when they've had them once a week. Sometimes they have them twice a week, but what we have to keep in mind is to make sure the finance office and manager's office can incorporate any changes that are made and that you'll have a revised draft at your next workshop. That's the hope anyway.
Okay, so Brian, I'm, I'm going to allow you to suggest what you think's going to work. I think that's, I mean, seeing you are the, you know, also the finance director and, and, and you have to do the revised and all that other stuff. So I'm going to, um, suggest that you recommend to us.
Okay, so, um, like Lisa said, uh, if you, if you look at the timetable, the budget timetable, um, the manager's proposed budget would get handed, handed, handed over to the council on February 8th. And the budget workshops, um, should be concluded by, uh, March 12th. So that's five weeks. Um, and historically we've done four and had a fifth workshop optional. But I, I think since, um, you know, we're all kind of taking on new roles here and there's some new council members. I think, uh, it's probably wise to schedule five, um, and that, that kind of lessens the workload. Um, you know, some, some of these meetings, you know, might get carried on a little later than we'd like. So I think by spacing it out, an extra meeting, um, might, might be a good idea. So that would get us down to one a week. Um, and as far as, um, you know, the nights that are, it's really what the council's availability is. Um, any evening, I would just propose doing one a week if we get ourselves in a bind and we can't seem to find, uh, a night of the week that everybody can meet. We could certainly double it up. I would just say, let's not do it. At least give two business days in between, you know? Um, that, that way I can turn around and get all the revisions made at the workshop. You know, we got to get, uh, the, the updates in there, the new budget out and distribute it to the council and printed and whatnot. So to have like a one day turnaround, it, it makes things a little stressful. Um, two days would, would be, I would say, the minimal. So one a week ideal. Um, if we got to jam them in, just don't, don't put them back to back, you know? Give, give us a, a day or two.
I would say that I've been on the council. Now my eight term and I'm, I'm so used to these things and of course, it's tough with everybody's schedule. But basically, uh, the council, uh, we, the manager presents us with a budget and we make some modifications. And basically that's what basically happens unless we have, uh, really some strong feelings on a, a topic and we don't really have a lot of extra money to, uh, to have any pet projects per se. And basically, uh, when we have our capital projects, they're pretty much, uh, done over a period of years to address those needs in the town. So, uh, basically that's what it works. It's not super complicated. Uh, and I would just suggest for the other council members, if they want to, uh, get a feel or a grip on this past, just look at, uh, some of the postings, uh, of past workshops that have happened in the last couple of years from the town's website. And you can just browse at them at your leisure and you can get a feel that I think all the minutes would be, uh, on the website and you can get a feel on how these, uh, meetings end up going. And, uh, this is a suggestion. So you can, uh, get a better feel before you go into this.
Steve?
Yes, go ahead, Sharon. Thank you, Scott.
Okay, so if, if he, if, uh, Brian was saying once a week, and I don't know what the other, other, uh, uh, committees or boards are meeting that, you know, that may be on planning, you know, for me. Um, but maybe we could do it on Tuesdays. Like, you know, like the 16th of February to 23rd of February and, and because we're going to start on the 8th, right, Brian? So that's the first one.
The 8th is, the 8th is a Mon, uh, Monday. So yeah, that's when the.
But it's the second Monday, it's the second Monday of the month. So we, we don't have to schedule, um, other kinds of town council things. So we could just make the 8th be the first workshop, right?
Yes, absolutely. Um, I, I mean, I would stay clear of Monday nights only for the simple fact that you, you guys might have other, you know, um,
Okay.
Agenda items to address on Mondays, but.
Yeah, but I was trying not to go the 8th and the 9th of that week. And so I would say, you know, the 8th on, um, that week and then do Tuesdays, the 16th and the 23rd. So that's three of them.
So 16th will, it's a regular town council meeting.
Oh, okay. It's a holiday. Yeah, that's a, it must be a holiday. Um, well, we could do the 17th then for that week. So the 8th.
Which 17th is the third Thursday?
Is it Wednesday?
Yeah, third Wednesday. I, I, I might not be available.
Oh.
So I got the Masala meeting and we've been.
You're an old pro, though, Scott. I mean, you're going to read this budget and.
Well, I, I, I have no problem with, I have no problem with the third Thursday. Is that better for you, Scott?
Uh, yes.
That'd be the 18th, Sharon.
Actually.
Yeah, that works for me.
For Lee, this is Lisa. On the 18th, that is a zoning board meeting and the zoning board will be in council chambers that night.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Steve, can I just make a suggestion?
You can. Uh, Brian has the floor, please.
Um, Brian has the. I, I would just suggest, um, that Lisa just go week by week and just tell the council what nights are available. And then if anybody has a contradiction with that night, we'll move to the next night that's available that week.
Great point.
Cause I, I, I think we could get a little confused by just throwing out dates that we can and can't do. Um, just take it week by week and, and she can kind of navigate. we can and can't do. Um, just take it week by week and, and she can kind of navigate this.
Sounds good.
I will, I do that. So we'll start with February 8th, which is a Monday. Does that sound amenable to everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
The following week, you have a holiday on Monday and a council meeting on the 16th. Scott Hurst mentioned he has a conflict with the 17th. Does it trouble him greatly to schedule it for the 17th and have him miss one?
Or we could do the 11th. So have two in that first week.
Okay. What is-
So are you suggesting, I'm sorry. Lisa, are you suggesting the eighth and the 11th? Is that what we're?
Yeah, and maybe-
That's what Karen Davis suggested.
The next week.
Okay.
And skip the next week.
So that would be Monday, the eighth and Thursday, the 11th so far. Then the following week, Monday, the 22nd?
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine. I say we do two that week. I mean, if, if Brian's fine with doing two that week also.
Sure.
That would be the 22nd and the Thursday, the 25th?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Thursday to 26, I got the Republican Town Committee.
The 26th or the 25th, Scott?
That's the fourth Thursday?
Yes, 21st.
How will, yeah, Thursday, Thursday, the 25th would work for me. It would work.
So eight, 11, 22 and 25. Those are the first four.
That's the Republican Town Committee meeting and, uh, uh, it's tough to get a quorum as it is. So-
I mean, we are talking about the town budget. I mean, just saying.
Then you could go into March.
And what's the deadline on March? You said the 16th?
Uh, the, and I think correctly is the 12th. Yeah.
Okay. Now, now with that being said, I mean, again, I mean, if, if we've already got, you know, tentatively four scheduled in the month of February, I, I mean, there's got to be a way we can squeeze two into the month of March and lessen the return time on these revised budgets for Brian to kind of offset some of the, the work. I mean, I did like his suggestion. I mean, it sounds great to get two out of the way, but if we can feasibly schedule these spaced out enough to have a good return time on, on some of this, I, I, I think that's great.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. We do it on Thursday. We might as well just stay with Thursdays.
Yeah, but I have something the first Thursday of March.
You're no pro at this, Sharon. You should be able to pick three up on the, uh, town budget.
I guess.
I want to cite for myself. Um,
The first month, the first week of March, you have a town council meeting on Monday, the first.
Okay.
You could, if you've got four already scheduled in February, you could schedule one for the eighth, which is a Monday.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we haven't discussed what time you wanted to start either.
Brian, are, are you comfortable with having the two day leadway, like a, like a Monday, Thursday?
Yeah, that's not, that's not a big deal.
Okay.
As long as it's not back to back, um, that it shouldn't, shouldn't be an issue.
Sure. Okay. All right. So that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we weren't getting ahead of ourselves. So, so if, if, to back up to Lisa, if the eighth and the 11th work, I'm fine with that. If the 20, if we said the 22nd of February and the 25th of February worked, that'd be great. And then March 8th, I think you had mentioned.
Yep.
And that, and that'd give us five.
That's five.
That's, that's, I, I think that's a great plan. Sorry. I don't mean to speak out of order here. Um, uh, Steve, I, Councilman Moffett, I was just going to say, um, that's probably a good schedule. I like the looks of that just because if needed, if need be, that still gives us, um, if we needed a sixth one, um, which, which I don't know that we would, but it would give us time to do it.
Yes. Absolutely. So can, can, can we agree on a start time? Do we have a, a specified start time? I mean,
Six.
Six o'clock sound good to everybody? Or is that two?
Make it six thirty. Cause I'm really going to fight about 30 minutes. This thing isn't rocket scientists, believe me.
So six o'clock. Bob Marvel, does six work for you?
Yes, six works.
Does six work for you, Sharon?
I'll make it work. That's fine. You know, if we started six, then get out earlier. So-
Yeah, that's kind of the thought process there. Um, and the Council Gary, six o'clock's fine. All right. So I, I think the council i- is all in agreement for a, a six o'clock start on these, uh, meeting dates.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. So now that we've scheduled that, um, I think that is, uh, the end of that. So, uh, so next up here is a board and commissions. Uh, we are going to discuss, consider and possibly vote to appoint John Penny Packer as planning board alternate. Do I have any discussion?
I think he would be a good, this is Sharon. I think he would be a good addition.
And this is Steve. I feel the same way, Sharon.
I, uh, I concur with both, uh, both councils. This is Council Gary.
Yep. This is, uh, Marvel. I, I concur also.
Okay. Uh, with that, do I have any, um, do I have a motion?
Mr. President, make the motion. We, uh, appoint John Penny Packer to alternate, alternate position on planning.
Do I have a second?
Marvel, I second.
All in favor?
Marvel, aye.
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Moffett, aye.
Davis, aye.
Motion passes. Uh, congratulations, John. Um, I look forward to your work on the planning board. Thank you very much. John, do you have anything to say?
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Welcome aboard, John.
Okay. Now at this time, I'd like to open up the public forum. Uh, please raise your hand to be noticed. First up, Joe Moreau.
Good evening. It's Joe Moreau from Old People Road. Happy New Year to everyone. I, I'd also like to, uh, congratulate John. Uh, John is a good person. He has the best interests of our town and he's well qualified for this position. Um, the thing I want to mention, the subject matter of my comments tonight were not previously posted, but are for informational purposes only, based on chapter 42 dash 46 dash six of the Open Meetings Act. In my opinion, I believe the stola sprawl in our town has increased the workload of many town employees, our town council, our planning board and other boards and commission. One of the first dates that I could find for a solar hearing was on June 5th, 2017 for the solar project on Route 91, Alton Bradford Road. Of course, there was work done by town employees before this hearing. Many, many meetings, hearings, workshops, et cetera, have taken place since the first solar project. Besides the increased workload from the solar projects, town employees and others still have to conduct town business. Uh, we spent quite a bit of time tonight, uh, getting dates for the budgeting workshop. Uh, when you look at 2018, 19, 20, the amount of work that was done for those budgeting workshops, and we have the town elections in 2018, uh, the PSES revision in January of 2019, general elections in 2020, and Lisa was telling me March of this year, we have a town referendum. So the workload done by our employees is incredible. Um, I know of nine employees who have left. Um, there may be more, but I know of nine. And sadly, one DPW employee was killed in an accident. New employees require training to get up to speed. The town only has about 42 employees and two are currently out on workers comp. Some may say, well, they get paid for what they do. Our town employees have always exceeded my expectations. Uh, a good example is Brian Rosso. I went to the budgeting workshops and I saw what Brian and, um, the former town manager put into those meetings and now we have Brian. So, uh, I want to give another shout out to Brian because I know the workload that he's under at this point. I understand most of our residents have been affected by COVID, but I can't imagine what our town employees are going through day in and day out for most 2020. You know, I go through the drive-through now with Dunkin' Donuts. I put my mask on and I can't wait to get through that drive-through and take that damn thing off. I can't imagine working all day long, uh, that our employees, our town employees do with, with those issues. I spoke to Brian Rosso and Steve Moffett about this. It's something I've been thinking about for quite some time. I also emailed the town council. I would like to propose an employee appreciation day in May. And the reason why I selected May was that hopefully by then, most of us will have received the vaccine and the weather will be nicer for outdoors events. I think it is long overdue and our employees deserve to be recognized. I have made some phone calls, um, with some suggestions I thought about maybe providing lunch for our town, town employees. And I have the work scheduled. Um, Brian was kind enough to give me that information. And I would also suggest that we use local, uh, restaurants if we decide on a lunch. But I just think it's, it's really overdue again. And I want to, uh, put the effort in. If anyone has any ideas or suggestions, feel free to co, uh, to contact me about it. Um, if you want to have a discussion tonight, that certainly is up to you. But I don't want the COVID-19 to, uh, to stop anything that we can do at a later point. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak? Please raise your hand. If you're on a telephone, uh, star nine to raise your hand. Okay. Seeing no hands raised, um, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn in honor of Walter Kenneth Babcock, who was a former Hopkinton Town Counselor.
Thank you.
Passed away.
I'm, uh, I would, I would note, uh, about Mr. Babcock, for the record, that he was vice president of the town council at one time. And when we went to the White House on September 27th, 1975 to meet, uh, President Ford, a group of people from Hopkins, and he was in his Indian headdress. He was a member of the Narragansett Indian Tribe and his wife was, uh, in a Native American, uh, dress. And we got to see the President of the United States. At that time, I didn't realize that President Ford is the only American president to be a descendant of one of the founders of Hopkins Rhode Island, Hezekiah Collins, who was one of his ancestors on his mother's side. Uh, with that, Mr. President, I would, uh, like to add to Sharon's motion, the name of Dorothy Lumbum, who is the widow of former counselor, uh, Carl Lumbum. And I would like to add, uh, actress Dawn Wells, who was on Gilligan's Island, but, uh, a show that many people, when I was a youngster, uh, uh, was a show that a lot of people and my contemporaries enjoyed. And, uh, I, I would like to recognize Dawn Wells for what she meant to my generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
And I'll second that motion with those additions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Scott Billhurst, aye.
Moffett, aye.
Davis, aye.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Good night, all.
Good night.